Take this in. Steve was right, it's answered this. She's...
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was a... I told Rob, you know. Yeah. I told Rob yesterday. We'll start with the block. I'm talking to people before. Morning. Morning. Very good. Alright. I thought this was interesting. One of our... One of the future candidates for governor wrote that in a... I guess they did some... Group the governors got together, the candidates for governor. Say that. I don't worry if he gets any information. I'm going to ask Kate about that.
Kansas statues.
Yes. Basically, he was saying that the counties inflate the cost of what a valuation of a home.
Value of property?
Yeah, just to suit their needs.
Is that who?
I like that. Again, he's going back and blaming everything on the county.
Yeah, well, that's the... That's the idea is that... I never understood why the state is so fascinated with municipal finances. They're just coming out of their pocket or something.
Right.
When...
They are.
They charge you too much for your state tax as well.
Yeah.
Because the change statute... Yeah, the statute is what dictates...
Yeah.
Of key determines value.
It's not like it's dark board, it goes higher.
Right.
Always plus ten.
Yeah.
Say it one of these days, the county is not going to help you on so good, these values will go down.
It would.
Everybody... All the smart guys are smarter than you.
Yeah, when people put overpaying or home...
Yes.
Um, the values will go down. And land.
I'm here. I've been at the Robert Rigs. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
I'd like to do.
No. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, down the park there.
Oh, are you?
I moved from... Stuff from school. So, no, both rain or I can get that. I mean, rain is bad.
Right.
So, I take this thing that... Scott says that what you put up on the brakes on here.
The pass, yeah.
So, we all listed them somewhere?
What the?
The listing of the raiders, we have listed them somewhere.
I haven't even put this on. I saw that, I haven't got it in yet.
Okay. I don't know.
I don't. Because they've changed.
Yeah.
Oh, Ripon. Oh, because David Cooper, Charlie Kennedy, it's all jacked up. Right, so... Yeah, I know who you're talking about. He's the older of the three.
Cook, Ripon.
Yeah, Cook, Ripon, and... There we go. Well, that's good.
So, who's the one? So, how many of our names were in?
That's good. He can handle everything more. Well, inside, I think I'm actually working it. And I'll be honest, I have a little bit of a problem with that, especially when you're getting on top.
But, but he knows best.
That's the part that...
I know.
When companies are behind that, there's a reason they're behind it.
Right, exactly. He's talked to a lot of people.
How are you doing? Changed this.
That's alright, sorry to hear that.
He was something special.
What?
I, I...
That's good. Would still live on it though? Have we sent out an email to Department of Defense to let them know and share with the...
Yeah, lots of messages.
That we're coming. Yeah. On the ground. Thank you, Greg. I appreciate you sending the updated version of the payroll. I saved it so I can have access to it. Thank you.
Do you want to see that?
No, no, I wrote it.
Why didn't you and Terry make changes?
Well, I... She made a change, that's why I'm... I didn't have any pride in it, so. And if we're down lanes that were on the streets, I prefer... I'll have a ditch in the town to do. Mr. Cooper will be joining us. Okay. In person, in person, I'm live.
Oh, wow.
I think he was blind.
It's a little bit of a shame, mine's...
Yeah.
The trade vote, October actually starts today. Starts in October, didn't start until...
Why is that?
It's the time of year. Yeah, yeah.
Alright, I've got nine o'clock, call me when your orders pledged. I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Right on time, right on time. How you doing today? Good, good.
Warriors, yeah. We got a tree down here on the border that's in not good shape. And I have to reach that same neck. And about cut that down. It's going to be about three thousand dollars. And that's just because you have to run a crane to lower a bigger chunk down because you don't want to... Cut one sucker.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's starting to lean more and more, it's getting really dead up top. And when I had that lady in a couple of years ago, she did not like that tree.
That was, that was one of them that she did not like, yeah, I remember.
Yeah, we got rid of this one she did not like.
It's going to end. Right above the water tank?
Yeah.
Is that going to have to be moved or anything for it?
Well, my other idea was, and I've talked to several people around town, about having a core. But, I talked to a couple of the guys, they said, "Help me, I'm very good at it." I don't know what the outside looks like.
Yeah.
Set three thousand dollars in place. If you go stump, could grind stuff completely out and then free...
And then try to look at trees we could replace it with and...
Graduate repair?
No. Something a hedge.
There you go, okay.
Anyway, that's one. And I don't know how else to deal with that.
Okay.
Just be shaming working with it. You bought no amount. I didn't avoid that in front of you.
Yeah, go more.
Yeah, it's...
Then you'd have to deal with the city, you'd have to block part of the city street off for them.
Yeah.
I bought a few chains, charge, charge them.
Okay.
And the other thing we've got going on is the city approach we... About that outlet down here that people use, that we use every once in a while. I don't know what to say. They've got outlets that ain't metered. That people use, so I got a whole buyer in, and he's going to put a plug in on the bar meter. They got actual plugs. They're going to do it with some keys to every side, if you want more somewhere else, if you get the traffic. That's going to cost around seven.
Around what?
About seven hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, the city's a bitch, because... That's the bitch way.
So, it's just a city plugin that's not metered anywhere?
Right.
Wow.
It's on a pole out here or is that...
Yeah, it's right down here. Is it the first light there?
Yeah.
There's meter. Yeah. We plug into it every once in a while.
Like for Christmas decorations and stuff like that?
Well, that, we put oak ends up down there and...
Sounds good. I've got no problem with, he's one of those, so the tree's kind of safe and deal too, so probably as soon as we get it done.
I really don't want to get it down.
It'll be... Bad news, I hope.
Yes.
And you want to come back with something? Like pin oak or something like that, if they come back.
Well, I'll look at pins, and then I'm looking at maples that are back from roads.
Probably maples, they...
Softs. Yeah.
Pin oaks are pretty hardy and they're...
I don't really like that sugar. Never heard of them. You've lived in them. Beautiful.
Let us know what you decide.
And I need to get ahold of, speak to Land State. Said they have a spade. Somebody would have a spade. Somebody said that during the block, put something outside of the house. Speak to Land State, they have bigger trees.
A big, for a big tree spade, yeah?
How big of a tree's spade? I don't know, I guess he'd probably drive out there to look, because they have big trees that are planted.
Oh, that's out, yeah. We were out there on Friday, and I did notice some trees planted out there.
Okay, so are they?
They're pretty good size.
They're more broad than that.
Yeah.
So, yeah. As opposed to just digging the hole and faking smaller trees?
Right. Well, there's some sort of...
Spend a ton of money on a tree, I mean.
Right. That'll be happening when we deal with it.
Definitely.
And I feel like John Havens called me back for the fourth time. Long we've had him, we get a day.
Okay.
That's getting bad.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Hi, Scott.
Morning. Morning. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
We had...
At David Cooper, at Tim.
Second.
If we probably move the second to approve the agenda as written or as presented with the addition of David Cooper. All of those, any further discussions? Hearing that, all the papers say aye. Aye, all votes say the same sign, motion carried.
Is there a reason that two days was going to be worth it to Ron?
I just, I need you guys to talk about what you started off with, what we had last year. We missed what happened this year. How about that make you think about it some more?
Just curious. It's not on the... This one.
And what was on it?
Maybe there's a reason why you've been dead. This last year. A lot of them think I need air, more people question that date.
Yeah.
Often anything. I just thought maybe there's a reason why we had two days.
Well, that's all.
Take a look at that. Maybe this ass. Give me some definition. Okay, so... I'm looking at this. This is coming with twenty vehicles. This is just new. Okay, so... ATAC thirty-nine, that's the number of the...
It's a grader.
Okay. How do we know when it's a grader, duck truck? Oh, wait, graders or vans or trucks?
We have this stuff.
Five point seven, we must get a duck truck in and get work on this. So, if we zoom in... It should be moving, or a shoe explanation, or just...
Just have some samples.
Too close to evidence. Finding some arrow, for sure. So that trucks on one oh two. If it's square, or that's a grader, then it's not moving. Click on the button. It is moving, so. I thought. It's not showing any information like speed or.
And.
Okay, well, one.
That's, uh. Is that showing here? So that's the number, no, it's in a problem. Moving, that's usually, if it's not right, you block, see numbers there. Not moving at all.
So the arrow's moving.
Yes.
Okay.
But other than that, well, it's, it's red on red. I think we need to see, or I see, uh, the peruseable license. Now we're not seeing. All of them. Okay, I'll try to look at mine. I think, yeah, in, the second number defines what? Eight point, eight forty-three, or eight forty, forty defines what? Eight, forty, eight is a grader? Okay, oh, eight means it's a grader. Okay, the other number is. The individual is the machine. The machine, right. So if you could have. Yeah, I've got that list on my. Yes, that'd be great. I have a look at it. Okay. I kind of know the memory, I kind of, well, I kind of know by what area, insurance, who it is, sure. Okay, thanks.
Alright, whenever you're ready, Scott.
Okay. Uh, just gonna make it while we order some thirty inch tubes, like the long, uh, just doing the money. Um, hundred five thousand, so, thank you for the get over, supposed to be this afternoon. I've got, uh, one for three ten, the T road, or T C T. Uh, we're trying to wait until next year to do it. It's a twelve foot diameter tube, sixty foot long. Uh, it's, uh, right around twenty-eight thousand dollars for it. Uh, we did check on it, did a head wall with two smaller tubes, and it came back to forty-eight thousand dollars. On that, so, probably go with twelve or two, but again, we'll talk next year, probably, on that. We did, you know, talk a little bit last week about, uh, the forty-five minute, or forty-five mile an hour speed limit on gravel road. I did contact, uh, Potwater County, they did that same thing. And I had a copy of their resolution, if you guys can see it, or just. The top I got.
That's, that's.
I'd use it. People want to go with that, but, but she, the lady I talked to, with her, she said they did that grant money at the time when they did that. And then they had to change all their. Speeds, they had to put the. The sign, the signs around the outside of the county, of them. And cause that's maybe about nine, even.
I don't, I didn't read the current, you might be having a new injury, in the valley, in Stevie Valley, or just. It might be a personal fancy something to do. It was on the road.
Do you have to post it at all, other than.
Well, I think.
Other than a notification in the hall recorder?
No, I think you have to post it.
Okay.
If it's lower, so they're, we're talking about forty, right? Is that, yeah.
They weren't forty, we were talking forty-five, fifty.
Yeah, and that's, it does, I mean, obviously that's the posted words affected, but if you say, they were other than. Yeah, you can, you, you don't have to have it on every, that's all. Everybody's deemed to have knowledge of that. But do, you can make, I think, a concentrated effort to provide, for a lot of problems.
And so the sign would say, all Jackson County roads can post to that, it, I'm interested, this is about the unpaid roads. Uh, yeah, then they gave a description of a paid road and unpaid road.
And you have to have some, some, so, being next to the subway, I suppose. And that would mean not even.
Well, a-again, when I counted, I wouldn't count, I was counting favor, but I just kind of estimated. You know, so if it's a favor like the highway command, I wouldn't maybe have counted it better. So I'll just, thanks.
I was looking, uh, I wanted to, since you're talking about that, uh, what I read. They did this, and they, there's a statute that said that if you go. Lower, you may have to have a. Some kind of traffic statement. So this says, this is, yes, it's eight dash fifteen sixty, position name, whenever local authorities and respective jurisdictions determine. On the basis of engineering, the traffic investigation, a maximum speed limit, rated as greater or less than reasonable. And safer than the conditions found to exist upon a highway or part of a highway. Local authority determined that there are useful and safe maximums, you know, higher off the bridge. So. Not sure if it's required, traffic, if you're happy.
Yeah, we just need to know, we need, need to do, with engineering study. Well, I'm there, so you had a certain, you know, our public works and the sheriff's department. Uh, the mother's speeds. So maybe that's enough.
Yeah, I'll take, take a look, as you mentioned. Some section, some, some. Molling.
What would be the estimated cost if you reduce that per time? I don't have the cost on that, just, if I need to see it all, would you list it on the sign? But you figure everyone, that, that post also. Post, um. Yeah. Okay. Last week, we replaced an entrance tube on one oh five S. Uh, this week, we'll be back on W road, if you ever, later on, down now. Uh. Got, uh, talked to Viberial last week about the land, like, moving up down on the lane bill, for letting the building. Uh, so we'll have somebody down there trenching, uh, probably first here Friday. Uh, it's kind of the day for these one day off. Been trying to finish up, get rest of that dirt, and the plastic stuff from off and over to there. It's right up there. And we've got a small tube on Y, stop two point two, uh, truck within the tube, again, all whatever related. And. Or, as of Friday, on W road up here, we said that two hundred fifty thousand inside, there's rock up there. Uh, we still got two hundred fourteen thousand left in there. About four percent, uh, we've got hundred forty-three, five seventy-eight left in there, it's Friday. We'll sure we get a couple of the pockets. Till we're back to.
Uh, I just went up that way this morning, up to W, and, uh, where, uh, Brandon had worked two fifty-four before we start sending the truck driving down there. That looks a lot better. Uh, getting the walker off the road rather than running down the, the sides and just staying there and getting rid of it, so. Uh, he did a heck of a job on that, and I'm, I'm happy to see that. Uh, also, W's look, come along nice, and they've gotten a lot of dirt moving in there for the ditches, and so. If anybody ended up that way, might be drive up that way, it looked, it's, it's looking good.
I'd, I'd really like to try to start with the through the south, or the northern, come this way. I, I, you know, the roller, and things like that.
Yeah.
Probably can actually put it to that.
Alright.
At least we try and some ditching down that way.
Yep. And like I said, it's, it's looking good, fast forward on it, it's looking good, keep it up, and let's see what we can do for winter, so.
Surely, they shouldn't be able to finish that, or.
They're, they're up to the curb right now. Getting close to the curb, they're not, they're not quite there.
What does that mean?
They're, they're, it takes a jaw over, and.
But how much, how much farther is that?
Two miles.
Yeah. Still, and we're, uh, almost out of two inch rock there, it's four. We may have to check distance and see if they've got two inch rock down there. Question that, then, we've done, Ashton, we talked about that too. Only got Paul in, ahead of mine, to get the scale of it, so. Yeah, I just, just something about that this morning. Probably have the time to check.
Where is the quarry over by there?
There's two of them in Ashton, one over by the river, and one that's really difficult to get to, up some winding roads, you know, the. John replaces that.
Yeah.
Okay, back up, in behind there.
Okay, I was just curious, because they got that bridge out over there, uh, on fifty-nine. And so you've got to sit there and wait for the traffic, at the stoplight for that, so that might be a little, little time consuming, to be involved in that.
So hands is out of, too much? Almost. Maybe I got the correct one.
I think we got the correct structure.
Roll side. Like it up the other side?
Yes.
Another expense I see right now, going out in the air, is going to be by, uh, some far signs. Part of the last, you know, my fridge, and all that shit, and that, we're out of those.
Okay. Check, see what they are, and check for some, see if they're. Alright.
Thanks. There you go. Waiter.
Hey, I'm good.
Nice trot.
You got, you got yourself turning up a little bit, didn't you?
A little more hair than I am.
Oh, yeah.
That was the game.
Good, good, it was a good one to be at.
Yeah.
A little last second. Uh. Happened to be some tickets that they hadn't sold yet online, and were at a price I was willing to pay. And my mom and dad were nice enough to keep the kids, and. Had a nice night.
Got a couple minutes, come on up. Pass this down, this is resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-one for the closure of the free roads. Take a look at that, and, uh, probably when we get done, uh, Kurt, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Can you do that now?
No, no, we're getting, maybe we got a couple minutes, but I want everybody to read that. Take a look at it. So did you stay for the. Acid bar, you're ready?
Uh. The extra curriculum?
The extra curriculum?
No, we missed that. We were on the west, east side of the stadium. Parked on the west side of the stadium, so we got about three minutes left in the game, and once I think. We got this under control, let's get our thirty minute walk.
So you missed all the fun stuff?
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, my dad informed me all about it, on the drive home. Well, after the game, uh, back from homes, went up to one of the linebackers.
He wouldn't shake hands.
He wouldn't shake hands with them.
And then he punched.
And then he punched. And then saying, sorry guy, hit Juju Smith Schuster, when he went out to give him a handshake too. He says it was because of things that happened during the game that he wasn't happy with, so.
He was being bullied. In a football game?
Got to get suspension, though.
Yep.
Alright, at nine thirty, go ahead.
Um, I just want, this is more of a, kind of feel you guys out, see how you think about this. Um, the city of Fulton, uh, linemen had come out and discussed with me about, uh, replacing some. Some pad supports for the transformers that we have out there. And they actually came out and, uh, and I know, Keith, you've been here long enough that I've been. With, my electrical demands out there are, uh, are taxed. I'm at, and, uh, they, uh, informed me that while they were moving that, that, uh, or planning to move that. That they had got the transformers, uh, upgraded at all of the houses that they needed to, to bring that voltage of seventy-two hundred.
Oh, wow.
Uh, and allow for higher voltage within the park now, which I didn't think was going to be.
You didn't think that.
That it was ever gonna happen, the way, the way it was talked, and now that is a possibility. But.
There's always a bunch.
There's always a bunch, but. We would have to replace all nine transformers.
In the park?
In the park. From twenty-four hundred transformers to seventy-two hundred.
At our cost.
At our cost. Yeah.
They don't do, they don't upgrade those?
Well, the way it was kind of explained, and, and thi- this is just all preliminary talk right now, we have not.
Cause the whole of it didn't have to upgrade, I mean, they didn't have to basically upgrade.
Right, but they, they were having issues there, like, just the way Corey kind of explained it to me. Um, to be able, and so they, they went ahead and, and the, the transformers, they were having issue with, they went ahead and upgraded those. Which then allows for really higher voltage to be sent on down the line. So right now, they have to set down transformers to bring it down to voltage that I can use out of the left for what we have. Um, so, as you know, and I, I've kind of discussed this, Mark, in a bit, in short, that we have very aged, very aged electrical equipment. In our main camping ground in, uh, Eklon. I, I got my first quote back from Corey, to replace nine transformers is ninety thousand dollars.
We didn't pay the labor too?
No, that, that's, that's, no.
That's just.
That's, that's the transformers, and that, and that's, that's being put in on our pads. Uh, and there's three that, that's, we're, we're looking at other, you know, that's just the first one we got back.
And Corey is the.
The head of electrical department. Um, so these, we've kind of been brainstorming. Um, so this would allow me to do, my, my number one goal out of this. Would be to find the upgraded wire that's been in the ground since nineteen ninety-eight. That I'm having issues with in my main camping. So as of right now, there's thirty-four spots, and that, eleven of those spots have been upgraded, and those are. Uh, the double, uh, camping, so they randomly wired those, but that's as far as they'll let us go with, with what we have right now. So there's about twenty-five of those pedestals that I'd like to upgrade to a, just a single fifty amp pedestal, fifty, thirty, twenty, like in the rest of the park. And that's the only piece that we haven't got at today's standards of, you know, campers. And that's where we have most of our issues in the summer. Because there's just not a lot of thirty amp campers left, I mean, and so we've got, moving to the holidays, we, like, we get packed in there, and then, you know, we're replacing breakers and. Septacles, and, you know, that would be my, my number one goal. But then after that, getting that, you know, we would be able to, you know, our possibilities blossom, and it's, you know, it's what we can go with from there. I mean, I would love to make it true long term, you know, something like, you know, we're in, in Emmett. You know, right outside of, like, Jeffries, where people come in and work, they have an, an actual place where they can pull in, and they've got sewer, and they've got water, and they've got electricity. You know, there's, I mean.
Some question, do you have to replace all of them?
Everyone, because, because they're not dual voltage transformers. If they were dual voltage, that would be a different, we'd be talking a different story, but.
What I mean is, do we have to replace them all?
All at once.
All at once? You can't do five, three, five minutes?
No, that's what, that's what I asked you before, we just got to split up. It would be taking them out, you know, from the get-go. Otherwise, if we try and split this up, and when the dual voltage transformers, you're paying a lot more for the transformer. I mean, yes, you're being split it up over a couple of years, but, you know, if we save the money and do it now with the actual higher voltage transformer that we need to be able to accept the, you know, the seventy-two hundred nine voltage, um, it will save us a considerable amount of money and time. So we're looking at, you know, a nineteen to twenty weekly time as it sits, you know, if we were to get the rest of these quotes this week or maybe next. Um. I have ideas in my head, I'm hoping I can meet with the city with and.
I'm surprised they don't caution you that.
What?
And they may.
We haven't talked to them yet. I don't want to do that.
Go to the city and.
I want to, I want to get. My goal here today is to be able to be in agreeance that worst case scenario, are we all? And, and be, being able to upgrade and being able to see further expansion at the lake. This would have to happen. Are we able to take that, you know, out of my capital outlay, get this done, but worst case scenario, this is what it costs. Is what I'm saying. Best case scenario, maybe they caution us some of this and are able to utilize these transformers elsewhere. Maybe not, I'm pure speculation.
Yeah, so you have plenty of money in your capital.
Yes, I have, I have the money to cover the transformers. But my, but my other thing was, you know, going forward, you know, if I'm taking a massive hit on my capital outlay, you know, if we do well and we have some extra money in our account, being able to replenish that back in there, you know, is, is that to be able to.
Yeah, in other words, if you, if you have a good year.
Right.
We'll build your capital back.
Okay, that's, and that, okay, that's what, I mean, that's what I would expect you to do. Okay, that's, you know, I. Well, I know, I know we're, we're, it's tight right now with some things, but I just wanted to know in the future, you know, if we can do a massive project like this and get it done. Um, you know, if we can work in the game that replaced, cause, you know, my next project was hopefully working on a bath house out there. But when this kind of came to light, this is, this is huge. For us, for us to be able to.
You didn't know this was coming?
No, I had no idea until this all started with the conversation about pouring pads for our existing transformers. And then when they said that was a, it's not, it's, it's an actual, instead of dreams, it's reality, it happened now. You know, and I, and I, from day one, and I've, you know, discussed with you, you know, when I first started here, you know, my vision for.
Expanding that.
Expanding that and making this, you know, in the end, you know, making this place one hundred percent self-sufficient.
So the wire that you were talking about, it needs to be replaced, is that something you can do?
I have some of it, yes, but, you know, as far as.
Trenching in and direct barrier?
Is it possible to do it or is it direct barrier? I'll be consulting with some electricians. Uh, what we have right now is direct barrier, that we're in the park. You know, it's a TRD, you know, um, aluminum, well, the, the new stuff that they, that they bring. Um, actually, the older stuff that we have is undersized and it's actually direct buried copper wire. Didn't know they were such a creature to do it. Uh, and, you know, through, having to fix it a few times, I'm now, you know, it's. So, you know, as that wire degrades and everything like that, we get higher amperage that we're pulling on it. And, and that's what, you know, in, in my opinion, a lot of these pedestals, you know, weren't done right, cause there's no true ground out. So what happens is we don't have a dedicated ground, whether they either run a ground wire with it or set a ground rod beside it, um, if we need to have a problem with the equipment or something like that, a lot of times it's melting down and, and, and touching metal before it's tripped. Whereas if you have a true dedicated ground that can, that can just, if there's a fault in the circuit, it, it can ground that out and, and, and trip that thing faster. So not only is that safer for our equipment, safer for camper's equipment, and it allows us to instead of have to constantly replace, I mean, I buy breakers and receptacles by the box. Not, not sitting.
One size, one size, we have our own. Do it now, you put it under tie, the size is right to it now.
Uh, most of it's ran in number two, uh, copper.
Okay.
So, which is fine if you're running one or two, but when your days change for them in a row.
Yep.
I mean.
Yep.
I mean.
Interesting.
So are we fine for the immediate future? Yes, absolutely. I mean, but I, 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 my goal of looking at this place, I'm looking at ten years out. Where can we be in ten years? Can we have these projects that I want to do in the next ten years done? Can we be self-sufficient, we're maintaining all these projects that we've completed? And, you know, we're able to, you know, utilize some of these funds here and other.
We care that is to get the electrical upgrade.
Right, yes, right.
So, yeah, I'm in favor of doing that, um, to whatever extent, it'd be nice if they can.
Right, I, I.
They can do some cost share, but we have to put the building, yes.
Right. I, 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 I've talked with Corey and do think, I mean, we've, we've got, I've got some ideas, he's got some ideas that hopefully we might be able to work together to find a way to re, reuse some of these and maybe then give a little bit of credit or something towards that.
So the transformers you're after right now, that you want to replace, city owns?
Well, the city owns regardless, I see.
Yes.
Cause basically the way, you know, the way it's explained to me is that, you know, it's working fine as it is right now. You're requesting us to upgrade it.
Even though it isn't really working fine here, we've got problems.
It is, but you're saying the water, if you request a larger water meter, because you want to put in a factory next to your house.
Yeah.
You're going to have to pay for the upgrade.
Right. Well, and, and, and in doing so, I think this will end up, there's some other things that we can go across this that we'll make. You know, we can go to a, you know, we've got nine meters out there right now too, you got to each one of these transformers. So we can go a lot of doing this, we can go to a single, uh, a single meter, I call it, that, that does the whole more size. And then, you know, I'm getting a meter charge every month for every single one of those. So there's some ways to consolidate some of those meters, that'd be less money for us, easier for the city to read, you know, it, it just.
Well, I would, I would say right now that I think we're all in agreeance that yes, go ahead and explore this, proceed with it. Uh, and then talk to the city, talk to Corey, see what you can come up with for a cost share or, cause it's, it's going to do nothing but increase city business too.
Right.
By increasing the lake.
One hundred percent.
I mean, we'll, we'll talk about what we do.
Because those people are coming in town, they're, you know, they're eating local businesses, they're, you know, they're buying stuff in town. I mean, and that's going to, you know, that's going to sales tax within the county and within the city that, you know, that they're getting off of this.
Right.
And by upgrading that, that allows us to have more people and allows people to have a lot more confidence in plugging in an eighty thousand dollar camper.
Yep.
Into a thirty year, a thirty, thirty. A thirty year old.
They need to shut their air conditioning off.
No, and, and I, I think this will, uh, bring in some, some other opportunities as well, once we get this done as far as, uh, possible future expansion that, that will allow us to utilize the other part again, that's not really, you know, we've got a long-term section that is just, for lack of better words, it's just there. I mean, we, we utilize it because that's the way Lou designed it to just, because that's what we had at the time, right? Now that this is a possibility, it kind of opens up that door to truly, if we wanted to do something along that, we can make a lot of people that are long-term. Sewer's a lot more, you know, being able to dunk their sewer is a lot higher probability than, or something that they want than being able to see the lake. I mean, a lot of people are coming in, they're building a house, they're doing something like, we need to spot to keep our camper for the next six months to a year.
They're not worried about.
Yeah, right.
Seeing the lake.
Right. And then we've got, and then we've got those spots that open up to other possibilities, you know, during, you know, that. And then this also allows us to, a lot of times we've got, you know, we're a very technologically based society anymore. We've got people that have phones, they've got stuff they want to charge at night, so we have a lot of people that will tent camp in a, in an RV spot. So, cause they want to be able to plug a fan or something, well, this allows me to go in and to like a lot of the places where people tent camp. Well, I can run a twenty amp circuit over to them or something like that. So they can, you know, that's, doesn't cost a terrible amount of money and allows them to, you know, I can put eight, four by fours in the ground, put a twenty amp receptacle on there that then allows them to utilize that spot. Uh, instead of, you know, and then gets us more campers in and.
Correct.
And during those holidays too.
Yep.
So.
I think, I think you have a plan, I think general consensus here is to proceed with it.
So I appreciate that, I figured that I wanted to discuss some further with the link.
All right.
And then when I can get, so as of right now, Corey felt very confident in that first bid, that they were a lot through them. That's why he got back so quickly with him. So he was happy with those numbers. So that's a good thing, that, that they came in over what he was anticipating and so hopefully we can get at least two more in. Cause I would like to get this ball rolling as soon as possible, cause if there's any possibility that we can get this done this year yet and before camp, it's, it's going to be a lot of massive amount of planning on, you know, our part and the city's part because it will. As soon as they replace one, they've got to replace one.
They've got to switch poles.
So our parks are going to be completely out of electricity. So whether that is me rounding up enough generators to keep, you know, the people that are in the park going for, you know, a couple of days. I mean, I, I, I don't know what they'll, what they'll do, but.
Corey, you just let everybody know that you're going to have to run off of your own system for a while.
Well, not, yeah. Right. Full consideration to get there, I'm just saying, it, it's gonna, it takes a lot of planning. And that's why I'm trying to get this started now, you know, make sure we're in agreeance on moving forward.
Yep.
On, you know, where I'm at. Um, and.
Yeah, like I said, I think general consensus is keep moving, keep supporting what's going on. We'll go from there.
All right.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Give you a call later and get some information about Twitter.
Okay.
Did you have any applications like when you advertised? Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
I did not make copies, so.
That's it.
Don't lose that.
All right. Anything else on that?
No, so there's just a special use approval letter.
Okay.
You all are good with that, and I can send that out to.
This is one we discussed before, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. The planning commission was happy with the agreement you said?
That was one that had been approved prior, like in another, another under.
Yeah.
Nothing has changed about it.
Does he still want to build a shop out there, does he kind of give that idea up?
No, this will give him a chance to build that shop. And if he's wanting to do this inside of it, he'll have to come back and process it and turn it for that. But he's waiting on that for a bit, but if we're going to build in a shop for it, so.
Waiting. I think my, my decision is to, just Scott Ward made this comment about the crazy, and your opinion? I would think that your group, your board of directors group would want to say something like that.
I'd like the motion to approve that, once everybody's heard that?
Yeah, some move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the, uh, special use permit for Matthew Seagull for a seasonal dwelling, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposing, sign, motion carried.
Thoughts? I mean, obviously that's not a true statement, but.
Yeah, cause it's market, and market's going to go like this, rate war like this.
He's saying basically, you dictate how you're gonna, if we need more money, we just raise the value of the property, is basically what he said. And I would think the afraidy's association would have some sort of comment about that, because that's just.
Yeah, they, they go to all the legislative meetings and talk with legislators.
Yeah, this was out in form, he made that announcement, I guess, just for your connection.
That, that's nothing new, that's always been kind of a culture.
Where you go? Two meetings here, so I'm going to talk about moving the buildings.
Yeah.
I like the statutes and they all seem to escape, they all need it, but the word they use for, there is no.
Stationary.
Yeah, stationary or foundation, all are kind of, I always like the little structure of definitions, they just say through. So I, and there isn't anything I saw that as far as statutes, regulations in print that said this is an improvement in this business. So I think there's guidelines that they, Sarah, I forgot the name of that. You got to follow up, or you're supposed to follow up?
Through, uh, the state PBD.
Yeah.
They set out guidelines, so.
I didn't know if that, I mean, if that.
Just the food court picture rule when it comes to, uh, what can be considered personal property versus real estate. How it's assessed.
Yeah, that's, I guess my point being is there's nothing in statute or, or regular law that I saw that said it is or isn't. protocol about it, I saw it saying, it is or isn't, so. So, it just is kind of a legal answer to that.
So therefore, we need to have a statute of progress.
That means if we can set up what we believe.
Or, or there's these, or not standards, that she's talking about, that in.
Right, I mean.
Appraisals.
See, if for zoning purposes, you want to change the regulations, where I can say, um, if it's under whatever square footage, you're not required to have an building permit. That would be the only thing, the value is a requirement, I ask.
But if we also say, all buildings, whether permanently or, or on skids, still are going to be valued, you're required to have a building permit, you will be required, that's not, I understand that that's currently not in the reg.
Right, there isn't any language in there about the number of square feet and not getting a building permit.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to set up a time where we can sit down with Kate and have a work session where we go through some of those and we answer some of those, because I think the, the number of square feet needs to be raised, um, to a, to a number that we can all live with, um, and I think we need to clear up some of these situations where when people in the community think that, oh, if I'm building on skids, I'm not required a building permit, and therefore I don't have to pay property tax on it, that's just not true, and I think if we have those in the regulations where the public can get to them, we should do that, so I'd like to set up a date where we can.
And I would agree with that, I think Linda had a good deal last week too, when she said we need to educate the public on what is actually going on, because as I said, I had a moving building, you know, that I'm using for a chicken house from out there on Hill, Hill B5 or whatever it is, and so, I'm not required a building permit for that, correct? To have it come out, set it in place, that's seen in that, in that paper there.
So, I, I would be, at this point, in the regulations that you would be required to.
Yeah, any building that's going to be over, use the number five, six hundred square feet, it's going to be moved onto your property, whether stationary or not, has to have a building permit.
So I want to.
And I think, so I think that's a misconception too, because I'm not building anything, I just had somebody else was building, actually, and we moved here.
There isn't clarity.
Yes, clarity is what we need on that.
So, one thing to throw out there, that we do have a resolution to administer the flood clean. So, how are you to know, unless you come in?
Sure.
That you're not putting it in the flood clean, or that there aren't any other restrictions?
Yep.
Or that by use, what you're bringing in is allowed?
Right.
For the zoning district. So, I just want to put that out there, it's not just a matter of a square footage issue.
And I agree with that, it's just something that, you know, when you buy one of those buildings, you don't think.
Right.
I need a building permit. You don't think I need to, you know, do something like that, so I think, you know, education and then going over everything and setting up some guidelines so that everybody understands, uh, you know, what it is, that's, that's a great thing.
So I had a call from Mrs. McClennick, and hers was moved in, bought out by trails and moved in, you know.
Yeah.
I actually told her not to worry about it until we had some guidelines.
So to me, the guidelines are just anything, that it's, it's broad enough that you just need to get a permit, because it's not stating anything that says, oh, if it's this size or if it's.
Sure, there's no diminution of succession.
Right.
Yeah. And like you say, I, I would have never thought of that, when we had that moved in four, five years ago.
Yeah.
You know, that, that would have been a, have to have a building permit or anything like that, because I didn't build it, so.
So like, when is your next meeting going to go out? We'll, we'll put something in once you guys.
I go back out.
Is that anywhere, everywhere, yeah, so.
We'll set them up in November.
I guess I'll set up November and we'll go over that.
Just do a work session, so maybe after we adjourn, come back down after lunch, ride lunch and sit down here, and you think with any reason we would need an attorney here at that point, or we can just go over and make the recommendations and get them back to him? If you, thoughts, I'm asking.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, we'll try and set up up in November. So we can sign here, do you? It's perfect. Linda, thanks Kate, appreciate it.
You're about to get away. You're about to get away, Scott.
Alright, it's ten o'clock.
Mr. Cooper.
Mr. Cooper, you're up.
Guest of the, the mission.
How are you today?
I'm alright, I'm seeing good.
There you go.
Kind of like physical misfortune, I guess it's a large.
There you go. Well, the, uh, purpose to do this now, is to be executive session, it's got so long, do you think we need to?
Subject to rush.
Fifteen, okay. Alright, um, I'm going to go into executive session, the purpose number three, my privilege, uh, to include, uh, of course, uh, for a period of fifteen minutes, starting at ten oh two, meeting reopen in this chambers, uh, fifteen minutes later, uh, in purpose discussing, um, possible litigation.
Well, just discussing litigation.
Litigation.
One second.
In case you're probably doing the same, go into executive session, fifteen minutes, uh, including the floor, David Cooper, Todd and Clark, uh, for fifteen minutes reopening in this room. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposing, same sign, motion carried. Unless, somebody who had their section used, and that's the city, or the chair.
Very good.
Alright, alright, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate you coming up.
Uh, no, it's just always easier than in person, than just across the board or picture.
Alright, thanks sir.
Alright, maybe you can turn, that offer down.
Oh boy. Do I want to turn on? Uh, yeah.
Somebody's time, folks?
Take care. He does like a voice that says, power is letters.
He talks every once in a while.
Can you tell what it says?
No, it's too quiet, but you can hear.
Thought it said like, power upon.
Yeah, but it's, it's been saying it throughout the day, Ally heard it, she was looking at me. Was it me?
Grandlungs of the machine.
David Cooper acted like he heard it. He said he was talking.
I don't know if I have to be with the microphones or not, honestly.
I don't get any ideas. You can make it a toaster. And what?
Alright, Todd, you have anything more?
Um, well, it's kind of more updates, status updates than anything. Uh, you got the court of the resolution on roads, that was one thing, let's get that in, that's on the checklist, uh, letter is up to bright speed. Yeah? So they, the, they received that, obviously no response yet, that was made last week, so. The tax sale judgment has been entered as of October ninth, so fourteen days from that, your final, your order of sale can be filed, it's a moving pace. Let's see those.
Is that when you'll set the date then too?
Well, they all set the sale date.
Okay, yeah.
And it'll have to be published, so it's going to be, you know.
Right.
Thirty days down the line after the fourteen days of that, so. Sure. And the only other thing I had that was, I brought was the response to the letter was received about solar issue, and that's obviously same copy, so.
Originally, I thought it was very good.
Yeah, yeah, that was, so, to the point. Not sure if we'll get it, but to the point. Alright, and that was really, I think, got more going on, but that was what I got then. Didn't think there was anything else, so since you talked about the road thing, I'll take a look at that resolution and see what they did to try to square it, but.
Right up on the speed limit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then there's pretty, I'm sure that there is no requirement, but you have signs there, I mean, there's just no statutes, so you have that something everywhere. What I've found, and this is me prosecuting cases in cities, like one of my cities, St. George, Pot Town, has citywide twenty mile drought, basically, every, you know, not every road, but pretty much every road that have come in town says twenty miles an hour, that's what I'm supposed to. They still get hit because the county speed on some of the roads is up forty-five still on big roads, and they don't, they have to have, then they have to have a speed, reduce speed ahead sign, or else, if they don't, then you can't charge them until they see the speed reducing speeds.
And City Hoyt had one of those coming in from the south, in Hoyt, it went from forty-five to twenty, and there wasn't, there wasn't any, you gotta have that reduced speed ahead in Hoyt.
Yeah, so that might be, I mean, that's what you're going to find, is the ultimate result of it is even if it's not required, is that somebody's having a fence, your speed is lifted, because there wasn't a word to reduce. So, that's not, that isn't a thing that you gotta avoid necessarily, other than knowing you can't, enforcement's going to be fair on some of the roads.
Okay.
Well, if you have that information, at some point, you can make a decision on how we're going to.
Okay. Sounds good, anybody got anything else?
Would you want to go ahead, if I think this resolution is preferable, try it?
I'm in favor of that, yeah. At least we can take a look at it, but, yeah.
I actually, I got a fear of that study, the parts.
Yeah.
They didn't say something new there about, uh, they studied the, or they went off of the, uh.
Recommendation the sheriff in the, I do a public court. Yeah, this, can you just reach out to their attorney and see what they did?
Yeah, I mean, I can, just, you know, I'm pretty capable of it, anyway, not in the study.
Okay, there's supposed to be the posting speed on the signs and according to standard requirements for the manual on enforcement, for average coverage.
That, that's what they got, okay.
Do they got anything else, Todd?
I do not.
I think he's good, buddy. Leave us here, I'm going. Treasure, what's your question?
So happy to hear from you.
Yep.
Alright.
Get back in there.
So, I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, dealing with the road closures, pre-road closures. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposing, same sign, motion carried.
Just for the record, closure means we reserve the right to go back and reopen, abandoned, it's different.
Yep.
We are closing this for the time being.
Well, we had a communication from Janet Heath, called, uh, the commission line and said, uh, should be representing their people, were not listening, and then want to look across the road from solar and roads property. Need, we need a consensus or a motion to pay this appropriation?
Just a consensus.
Okay, so the appropriation to Jackson County Coalition that cares committee, is that what it is?
Jackson County Community Coalition.
It's the community coalition that cares for the fifteen thousand dollars.
Eric Davis.
Yeah, the, the multi-school, all three schools.
Multi-school, there we are.
Yeah.
And that will come out of the alcohol fund. So, need consensus for that, Google everybody.
I do know, if we can speak just a little bit on that organization, I think, at some point, they're going to, that group or the superhens may ask for some additional funding out of that, possibly, um, look at some mental health, um, help for our school districts, and wanted to know if the commission would be open to hearing about what that would be and maybe what the cost would be, uh, if I said I would bring that up, so.
Sure.
Um, at some point, if, if, uh.
You want to put a presentation on that?
Yeah, I think basically they want to put some information together, bring it to this board and, and kind of give us an idea what they're thinking, that they feel like that may be a benefit to the community.
Sure. And we do have a communication here from Gordon CTA, uh, for our audit, that ended, uh, for the financial statements of Jackson County for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, uh, from reading through this, and I'll pass it down, is everybody got it?
I got it.
Uh, looks like everything was, was good, they recommend that we, uh, do avoid, try to avoid on credit card transactions paying sales tax.
And I would like to add to that. If they can't follow by those rules, they will not have credit card, they will come off, we'll be done.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe you can send out a memo too, so that they get all the receipts.
I'm going to send this out.
And stuff with it, yeah.
Well, we've been on them, but we don't seem to carry the way we need to.
Same.
I think that's a good idea, there.
And we have, um, suspended a couple of credit cards in the show, so since we're like, compliance, which like.
Yeah. I think, I, yeah, that's what we need to do, so.
Alright.
I'm in favor of that.
And we got a chance to look over the politics again?
Not yet.
Okay. So, I would, I would, uh, looking at this, New Year's Day is on Thursday, January first, are we going to back up on Friday, January second for one day?
Yep. I, in my opinion, should.
And I'd like to have a conversation about discretionary day and the school birthday. I believe, Christie, when you, when Linda, you can maybe speak to this years ago, that was given. One of those was given because they were not giving raises, and something to that effect, and then it just never went away.
The discretionary day was given because we hadn't had a raise for about seven years.
It's a discretionary day, I'd like to see it go away. Uh, we've given very substantial raises over the last few years. And I think, I think that needs to go away. I don't have a problem with Thanksgiving, Friday after that, okay, great. But we're very generous in the number of days off we give, please. Wow.
I just think July second needs to go away.
The what?
July second needs to go away, we have two days here, Fourth of July.
No, for sure, I thought, I thought it was already off.
Oh, okay.
No, I let everything as is.
Oh, no. Yes, just, just one day, it didn't, didn't stick, yeah.
I would keep discretionary day, that's my opinion. And birthday.
Well, I, I'm carrying, I'm gonna probably be the odd man at her, but I think Friday, uh, January second, you're not gonna get any work done anyway. I'll pitch a dollar to nine, it's, it's gonna be a, uh, sit around and do nothing day. I don't, I mean
I guess that's
No, I mean, on it, let's just, let's just be honest, I mean, that's just gonna be flat. What it is, that's what it is in most workplaces, and you, you do that, don't get anything done on those days. I mean, if, if we're gonna be, and that, and then if we're gonna get rid of, if we're gonna get rid of the discretionary day, I would just move it as a floating day that we can put in on, on the, on the Fridays after holiday or something like that, see what I'm saying? I just don't, I just don't think that
So are we, are they gonna get anything done on Friday the third, July third?
They have July third off. Shouldn't they be doing Thursday and Friday?
Right, we're gonna take Thursday off, you're, you're gonna
No, we're gonna take Friday off.
Friday off.
Friday.
So that's okay.
For the, for the fourth.
Okay, I would take away discretionary day of January second.
Well, and that's what I say for
We're just trading one for the other, right?
We're, we're trading, we're trading one for the other, but I think that it is a little bit more, it's a little bit more structured that way, so that we know what everybody's gonna be here and use it that way. And I, I would say use the discretionary day, go ahead and take the, the war discretionary day out of there, and we can use that as a floating day on some of these holidays that come in when, on a Thursday or a Friday, you know, I mean, I, I mean, on a Thursday, and Friday's supposed to be regular work day the next day. That make sense?
So what are you gonna say?
I understand what you're saying, but I, I think they both need to go away. I mean, give it the day off. If we're giving them the day off, and we're giving them that extra day for their, for their birthday, I mean.
Were you gonna say something? Okay, well, that would, that would be my recommendation. That would be my recommendation is get, let's get rid of the discretionary day, and that's, is the commission's, uh, discretion, discretionary day, it's the commission's discretion. We use that as a floating holiday somewhere along, and there, there might be a year where we don't use that.
We already have that feeling.
Well, no, I, I understand that, but I, they're, they're, again, I, I think that's a little more structure rather than saying, you just take a day off whenever you want to. That, that's what, we have comp time for and things like that, we, we still allow them to build up to sixteen hours of comp time.
So we have one day at New Year, Martin Luther King Christmas Day, Memorial Day, one day at Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, one day at Thanksgiving, Christmas, the day of
One day of Thanksgiving?
That's what I'm thinking, we're getting Christmas Eve off now, and we're getting Christmas Day off.
Or if we're following the Supreme Court, Supreme Court's two days of Thanksgiving.
I'm not worried, and don't take this away.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's more important, right?
Yeah, I, I don't really care if the Supreme Court or anybody else does, I mean.
I, I don't, I don't, I'm not in favor of taking the two days off Thanksgiving. I mean, no, I'm not in favor of taking away the two days off Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, get the day off.
So then, the only thing we can take away would be just one discretionary day.
And use that as a floating
So really, we're not taking anything away.
Right.
I, I think that, I think that we
I don't, I don't wanna take anything away from, really.
I think that, well, but I would use it more as a structured day, that's up to, that's the, the our discretion to use.
And my argument, my argument is that that was put in place when we had not been giving raises. Now we've given good raises, see, it needs to just disappear.
Sure, I mean, I agree with that, we've given good raises and everything, and I, I will not argue that. That's why I say take it away as a discretionary day, and let us use it at our discretion to place on the calendar in a place that it makes logical sense to use for everybody. That way it's a more structured use of that than just you take off tomorrow, and I take off next Thursday, and it, it's hard to, it's hard to keep an office or a, a road registry going when you have people just using, using that discretionary day whenever they want.
Because sometimes discretionary day goes right till the end, and then it's like, oh, I got my discretionary day.
Yeah, I gotta use mine.
And that causes the problem. But once upon a time, we had two discretionary days. I'm not sure why that wasn't, I got cut back to one. I don't know, I I would take away discretionary and give January second off, but does that mess up any bookkeeping? Anybody, Chris?
I don't say I would.
It's fine, so. Let's wait until our year ends before that.
So all we're doing is moving the discretionary day to January second.
Right.
I'm not
For, for this year.
For this year.
For this year, for next year.
And it's twenty-sixth.
And I'm not in favor of that, but that's okay. Like I said, I, I think we've been very generous with the things that we've done, and I just don't see a need for that extra day off.
Like I said, I would, I would just soon take discretionary day and use it as the discretionary day that we put out there.
But we don't need to do that, we, we already have the ability of, we if, three days before, uh, Thanksgiving, we go, you know what? We're gonna give everybody that day off, we have the authority.
Sure, I don't understand that.
So we don't have to name it something else.
I'm not, I'm not naming it anything, I'm just saying to what's, if we're going to, to give us more structure for having people have the day off. Because we might not use it on, on the, on Christmas or New Year's Eve.
Or what structure do we need, is we list the days off?
You're not following me, I, I understand what you're saying, but you're not following me. So if, if next year in twenty-six, we give Friday the second off, right? Well, the year after that, that might not fall where it need, where it, we need to have. It, it might be a year where we don't have to use that anywhere. But then, if we use it, if we have the discretion with the discretionary day, commissioner's discretionary day, to use it on, uh, in, Independence Day. Okay, whatever, Independence Day, Christmas Day, whatever, however we need to use it. We might not use it anytime. But I think it would give us more structure that way. To use it in that manner, rather than just saying it's a discretionary day, use it whenever you want to. Because that's why we have comp time for.
And, and so what I'm hearing you say is you just don't wanna take it away. We, we're not gonna eliminate any days off.
No, that's not what I said, I said you're about to give a year where we don't use it.
And what I'm saying is you don't need to, you don't need to put something in place that we already have the authority to do. And I don't know what more structure you're gonna give. If we set this, we know what the dates are out a year ahead, and if we decide in twenty-seven, that, that, uh, New Year's, whatever day we wanna give that second, that second day, that Friday off, we have the authority to do that. I just wanna reduce back by one single day, one single day.
Oh, okay, then, I, I mean, I'm more than willing to do that, but then I'm also saying that we need to do Friday the second. I, I mean, seriously, if you, if you don't wanna go with discretionary day, we need to do Friday the second.
I know, okay.
So, I mean, had, however, if you don't take away the discretionary day, I'm fine with that. But then I'm also
Okay, but, but your, the, my point is eliminating a day off, and you just wanna replace it with something else.
No, you just said we have the authority to give a day off. Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna tell you, let's use our authority to give a day off on Friday the second, because a lot of people travel on those days. A lot of people travel on Thanksgiving.
That's what vacation's for.
And I, I would, but you, how, so, okay, so how do you pick and choose vacation? If I'm gonna be on, you're gonna be gone, who's gonna, who's gonna get? Do you go on, uh, do you go on seniority and just say?
That's not, that's not up to me to make that decision.
That's a, the department head.
That's correct.
You're correct, but it's just, it's just so much better for the morale of everybody to go ahead and say, we're just gonna do that, so you, you know, you wanna go to, you wanna go to, you know, Oklahoma?
I agree how that all works. So, you, you tell me what, what day it's gonna be, and we'll
Well, I say, if you wanna give your discretionary day, I, I'm in agreement with that.
But you're gonna replace it with another day.
But for this year, I would just as soon give off the second of January also.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
And I'll get the last discretionary day, and we'll just say to the commission's authority, we're gonna give off the second of January.
As I've asked before, I've never liked discretionary days. Because, like I say, they don't get, you're gonna see them not get used within a year, and then we hit the very end, and it's like, I got this day and I need to use it.
So just
I see you got a cross out on that.
So you're gonna put in Friday, January second, right?
Yes.
Take off Thursday, July second.
Yeah, Thursday, July second, Thursday, Friday.
Take off discretionary day.
You're leaving two days of Thanksgiving. Okay, so just, just for clarification here. You brought up the Supreme Court in State of Kansas, they give twelve days off, we're giving fourteen.
Okay. Sure.
Want that noted.
So then, uh, under Sheriff Control, discretionary day in lieu of birthday must be used for the seventh, uh, September fifth. So we're taking that discretionary day language out of the sheriff, correct?
If you can go away with the
Yeah, well, I mean, so it needs to say birthday, no, nothing about discretionary days ever, it doesn't say it for landfill or the, anything else, or courthouse, or anybody else.
Correct.
So let's take that language out of there. So there is no in discretionary day in lieu of birthday. It's just gonna be birthday.
Yep.
All right, so everybody good with that then? Do we need a motion on that, or just a consensus? Go through the holiday schedule, I think we need a motion to go through the holiday schedule. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the holiday, twenty twenty-six holiday schedule for Jackson County employees.
I'll second it.
And promptly moving second to approve and promptly moving second
We'll come back to it a year from now.
The twenty twenty-six holiday schedule for Jackson County employees, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Yeah, I'll have to tell you, just because I have the same mail, that the treasurer's office upstairs gets audited every year by the state. They answer to the state, just like the president's office and everybody else. And so they pull
Wait a minute, you're pointing at me, Paul?
Because sometimes, you, you said that, you know, the president's office goes to school, and you know, I always felt like you thought that they were more controlled by the state than anybody else.
Oh, I don't know if they're controlled, but
But, I mean
There's state statutes that acquire
There are, and the treasurer's office does too, I mean, they take classes and stuff, most of theirs are online. But the state actually has a review committee, and they've done it for several years. But they pull, like, all the different transactions throughout the year of every clerk that's upstairs, and go through them and see what's wrong, or, you know, this or that. And we always had reviews on it and stuff. And so she's always said, you know, I wish I could do something for people. And so this year, she sent out certificates, and Jackson County actually tied first. And then on driver's license, which is not an easy task to do, they tied, they actually got third place. Which, you know, you have just so scary numbers, but the real idea is it's not a very easy thing to do. And actually, right now, they have basically two new employees up there, so I'd say they did pretty good.
Yep, very good.
It's just a, you know.
Very good.
But it's quality assurance through the state.
Thank you.
I think they know I need anything else, but I still do.
Have we got any applications?
Or Oh.
Or, yeah, super, uh, public, or
Yeah. Superintendent?
Yeah.
Those are bills, why don't we finish the minutes first, and then we'll reveal?
It's, they just got something off, what I was talking to Scott about earlier. They're in, brought up their closure reports, and I can have them have a certain amount of funds available, like tomorrow before shutdown. So I need to go with that with Scott to ensure what the fund amount is, but I think it's gonna be for each department. It's gonna be transfer station, H H W, and landfill. And what I can look at is about three hundred and nine thousand. And right now, we have a hundred and nine thousand, um, landfill. So just something to
And he needs, he's required, I would say statute, to have a certain amount in the landfill, is that what?
It doesn't necessarily have to be there, I just have to send these states something that says we have X amount of dollars at our in case
In case, can, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I know what you're talking about.
So we need to have a discussion later on that, so, I'll talk to Scott first, because I'm sure that's what he just said.
Is that called every year?
Cause they go down, I don't know if they do it every year, if they drill wells down there and check them, and build areas.
If I understand correctly, and I'm new to this, but I think the argument has to submit a report yearly that states what it would cost for us to do.
Correct.
So I think, the three, I think it's around three hundred and nine thousand. Judge Miller, you're someone who's.
Yeah, some lady, some, some galley. I'll probably, I'll probably have to take him into, to, to south, the weight facility, just to. Fence and what they have, yeah, there too.
All right, is everybody ready for minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections or additions?
None.
Living guy? Hey, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 6, 2025.
Something.
Yes, I'm probably moving second to approve the minutes of October 6, 2025, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to reoff of this, you guys just, I'm going to back it up, of all the buildings, just to make sure I haven't missed anything, so. Road and Ridge, you're going to have the whole site, and then the point side, and then Bridgeyard. Okay, um, in the landfill, the sheriff's main office, the sheriff's maintenance office down here, where they, where they control cars.
Who's in it?
Down there by the door.
Never been through that.
No. Um.
It's a little election trailer.
Yeah. It's a beach. Um, the noxious weed, household house roofways, recycling, and then back up to the courthouse.
Six, six.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Here, you want, you wanted to read this, with the, Scott, Bob said, debate, Kansas and public are. Brayers, and how they have to do for you to do what they do.
So then, if you sell more for what your appraisal is, you can, or, you know.
I got to kick that out.
That makes more sense. Thank you. Anything unorganized here?
I didn't see anything.
Um, which building was that talking about when you said the five rooms going to be like Thursday?
The new building at Landville that we're showing the, uh, the motor in there. Yeah. So they can plug it into the water.
And we got some applications there?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Application for emergency. Do you have them?
Not one. Only one on the stadium. Green code. We'll probably have to figure out how to get them on the deep, but it is out there.
Thank you. You are worthy. Oh. Good show.
Definitely try to do it if you want to do more on this topic.
A B B. Yeah.
Which one?
All of it. My other?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody in that area? Nothing about that.
So we just talked about those again?
What's that?
We interviewed those again, those are all the ones.
Yeah, one interview, one group interview. Some of them were good to me before.
Right. So you want to tell me one number? How would you do that?
Sure.
I guess I'd be able to do that too.
Do what?
It won't be very easy. It's a little bit short. It's a little, I don't know, a little bit of a, so I said, you didn't say it.
I've been interested in.
Oh.
Right. You want to go?
Just there's a meeting. Just because of the, you know? Since they didn't have a question.
Can.
I mean, I understand that, but I know.
The big passion is out of respect, yeah?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
With what?
There's like four, four people that I think would be worth interviewing.
He said those, but I said, don't you think we need to interview him anyway?
Sure, we can.
I mean, just because.
That'd be great. We ought to set it up for.
I mean, is that okay?
Do we see it for? You can just throw it out. Get a whole bunch of people available Friday. If it's easier for them to come in the evening, I'd be available in the evening. Make it easier to come in the evening.
Friday evening, I will not be available.
Thursday evening. That'd be boring.
Are you going to have some coffee? Are you having the?
Thursday evening, I would be, but Thursday would be available.
The fall time, I mean, should be the live.
That's fine.
This Thursday, I mean, this is Tuesday, you're doing that very quick.
Yeah.
I suppose responding to the song for those, so. I know, but don't think they're not interviewing.
Yeah, if it's too soon, that's fine.
I don't care.
How about give them a full week, a week from this, maybe? Or next, or maybe the 20th, if we do it on the 27th after lunch? And if they need to be, then you can ask them if it's more convenient for them to come after five o'clock. We can just do everybody at five o'clock, you may just ask that one.
Sure.
But on the 27th, maybe. Mark, what do you think?
On the 27th?
Yeah, that's Monday, a regular meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if we can do it for a regular meeting, that's fine, just try to say, but if they come to evening.
I'm just thinking they, they all probably may or may not work.
Yeah, I can do, I can do a Monday evening then. On the 20th.
So just sort of, yeah, see what, see what works for them.
Yeah. I give it two times a plan.
Okay, so I'm trying to do the 27th. How long do you want for each one?
Uh.
How long do you want for each one?
Um, you know, the last time we did it, fifteen minutes.
We tried to go a week out for, we were sitting there waiting.
Yeah.
So just fifteen minutes?
Yeah. You still have the questions, I think?
I'm looking for them.
Are you? Were there before?
Yes.
Did I, did anything print over there? Oh.
It was quiet, I didn't hear it.
One of my listeners, one of them. So I'm gonna check them off, I'll forget one.
You know, call team and make sure that there's either somebody down, up out of the building and.
I sent a reminder, I told them that you would be coming around with them and have somebody to help. And I told the girls that somebody will be coming.
Um, I assume he's gonna have to, uh, attorney's office, I thought, or court floor? Or do we need to go in there and inspect?
I think he would be able to. I don't know, they might just want to see what was there.
Okay. We'll cross that when we come to, if you need further, deeper access, we'll do it.
All right, then, do we have anything else?
Um, I'd like to, did we set date for Kate? Uh, I don't know. Be with her at some point, say?
Well, I don't think we ever did set a date, probably ought to get her down here so we can verify with her.
Said something about, I don't remember.
Can you come back in? We'll send a session.
Uh, I have a good question for you. When do we pay HR partners, when our adjoining counties is looking to do something?
Seven days a month.
Pay, when do we pay HR party?
Three fifty.
Three hundred and fifty a month?
Yeah.
And then on a case by case basis, or?
Yeah, that's a routine.
Anything, yeah, they, I think there's a, a certain amount of stuff they'll do or answer for that three hundred and fifty. But if we ask them to do an investigation, or we ask them to do interviews, that kind of thing, then they're gonna pay whatever we require.
Per case, for investigation, or per incident, HR partners does multiple counties in Kansas.
And then, if we said something about to Vayner, uh, folks who go to Vayner free.
No Vayner pan-?
Vayner Township.
Vayner Township, about meeting.
On, who knows, that was the 10th.
You can stop to hear that meeting, too.
Um.
That's the 10th of the evening.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if we put any advertisements.
We put it out on the website.
I mean, who are we gonna, I think we're gonna contact Lou.
Right.
And let him see if he can get to know 10, 12, whatever, till you come in and talk and...
That's...
I think that's a, I think that's what we decided.
Yeah.
10 to 6, and, all right, I'll go.
That's not you.
I'll reach out to it.
At 6:10?
Yes.
On the 10th?
On the 10th. 6:00 PM here.
Make sure she shows up.
Make sure she shows up for her red spot.
I can see I'm stopping.
It might not be a bad idea, I mean, if we need...
He's just a special.
Well, and what I don't want, I don't, I guess I'm not gonna tolerate is it turn into a bike road and bridge type conversation, I think. Because we want to talk to them more about how, how we want to approach, or how they think they want to approach, uh...
Giving us information.
Giving us information, or that's not giving them information, I mean, it's a two-way street.
Really not a meeting about road conditions at this point. It's more about, do they want full-fledged, uh, responsibility of it? Or do they just wanna put together a three-person committee that would report back to us? And have a quarterly meeting to talk about their roads and stuff at that point. Really, this is more of a conversation.
Kind of set to that, okay.
Of how we communicate with them.
And I think that, uh... I think that we need to make sure that it's gotta be on a county-wide basis. We can't just pick and choose a township to say, here you go, you're on your own.
No, for sure.
But get their feedback on that and...
We just try to, we just talked about starting with Vayner.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, I mean, you said that, whether they want full-fledged responsibility for it, or...
Yeah, what are their thoughts on it?
Yeah, that's what I want to do, I want to get their thoughts and, and point out some of the pros and cons of that.
Cause the, I mean, it's gonna be very difficult to set up a catch-up form of government.
Yes.
And so, how would we structure that, the three-person committee that's gonna elect them at the time of election?
Right.
And then they would come to a quarterly meeting to talk about road concerns they have, concerns in their area? And then, how we would plan out those and, and talk to them.
Right.
You know, talk to them a little bit about long-range planning, get, and really be able to give them information of what we are currently doing.
Yeah.
And cost of equipment, cost of, uh, rock and different things, so.
Maybe that point's not too near.
Yes.
I agree, once we get the, if we ever get those three-person committees, then...
Right.
Yeah, for sure, it's not gonna be part of it. Stop our news.
All right, Kate, do you have any dates in mind? For, for setting in, have a work session?
You want to tell me, like, you wanna do that, you wanna do it on Monday, I'm guessing?
You can, or we, you know, if that's not a good day for you, that's what we're trying to work around your schedule, too. No day's a good day for you, come evening?
Right, now, now.
I was thinking maybe, you know, if you want some time to, to think about some of the things that you would like to talk about. You know where I stand on raising the square footage, um, and, and some of those things? And so I think if you have some thoughts on it, if you want a week to think about it, wait a week, or we can wait three weeks.
Do you want your three weeks, or whatever you can fit in?
It's, it's not urgent that we do it right away. I just wanna have the conversation, and I wanna put something on the calendar. What, what gets you down the road a little bit where you can have that conversation?
Well, September, September to December are, like, crazy. So if you're wanting to do it this year, you just need to tell me what...
To me, it doesn't need to be done this year, we just wanna get something set up to where we can look at it. So if you wanna push this back until January, I'm more than happy to do it.
January's really not good.
December?
So we can, we can do it in November, we can do it on Monday, if you all are here, so later.
But we did on, on, well, uh...
I'm here.
We will, uh, try, how about this, we'll try to...
About we, we'll, we'll order lunch, and if you want Jamie down here to have, be part of that conversation?
Yeah.
We'll buy everybody lunch, and we'll sit here and just have a conversation. Again, it's just, it's really more of a conversation about what, what we hear from the public? And then what we can do as far as making some clear, concise decisions and regs, so that they're known as entertainment, like, to help your office. I mean, obviously, it would help you guys.
Do you, uh, have you all read all my interview questions?
I, I want a copy of them so we can, we can, like, know what I'm looking at.
So I gave you that binder?
Yep, it's in there. I mean, what, what section, what section are we gonna be looking at mainly?
I think, I think that's open for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, because, like I said, there, there isn't anything in there about size requirements and what size, so...
Sure.
What's this one? The bigger of the three.
I would say in the, it's in Article 27, or somewhere where it talks about, um, application and procedure on the zoning administrator. So there are set requirements for the appeals board and, um, planning commission is kind of their bylaws, but there is something in there on the zoning administrator, that if it's a, the permanent application process, it would probably be closer to the back of the book, because all the other are just the zoning, um...
Setbacks and all that.
The zoning districts, so... I'd say it would probably be in the procedure and enforcement.
Okay.
Let me see, look, I don't know.
You think in November sometime?
Sure.
Maybe on the first date?
Um, purple is something important for you all to read, too, is that flood plain, which is in the back. So purple, 35, enforcement violations and penalty. Uh, 117. There's also probably a lot to read on non-conforming parcels and uses and all that, too, that... Because some things that I'll bring up is, are things that you might wanna think about when setting size requirements or... Size requirements for building permit, or zoning clients' permanent applications, okay? So, things to think about in that regard. If you have a non-conforming parcel and somebody built something onto it, imported something onto it, if it's non-conforming already, they, there's really not a whole lot they can do unless they need the current setbacks.
Non-conforming parcels.
The non-conforming parcels, so there is a smaller parcel.
Than 28?
Well, non-conforming, meaning it's like an acre or less than an acre parcel that was existing prior to the 2010 regulations.
Okay.
Okay, so, if there is a house built on it and it doesn't meet the setbacks with current regulations, if anybody puts a deck, or an addition, or a porch, or anything on that, they, they can't, because the house existing doesn't meet setbacks, and we can't meet setbacks at that point, any addition to that. Um, so things to think about. I think, uh, it's probably, it's gonna, any, any amendment would probably be in those sections.
On 117, or...
Yeah, or towards the back of the book. Those, those articles towards the back are more procedural aspects of the regulations. Um, like Article 33, that's page 108, that's the site plan review for...
108.
Yeah, so I would say Article 31 would be things to look at.
And when you say article, you're talking about?
The articles and the regulations, I think. Article 7 is A1 of the administrator.
Right, when you, I don't see anything that says they're sections, but not particles.
Yeah, there are articles and then sections.
You're talking about in the front.
You have the top, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be in your...
It's not on the, it's not on the table, so, yeah.
It should be in your table contents.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Okay.
Um, so November...
November or December? You said?
November 10th, you guys are near me here?
Good with that.
And we're close on the 11th, is that right?
We're gonna, we're gonna meet for Vayner at evening.
Just wipe it all out?
Yeah, we'll do that.
No worries.
At what time, 12:30? 12? One o'clock?
Yeah, it's gonna be 12, we'll buy lunch, that work for you?
Um, 12:30?
Give us a chance to run over, get it.
Well, 12, 12:30, and Taylor's gonna be on with lunch, so.
Okay, so it'll be 12:30?
Yeah.
Okay, 30?
Like pizza.
Sure.
It'll be you and Kate come there?
Yeah.
Be available.
So it's more of a size requirement to issue a building permit, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, and, and, uh, we need to talk, one thing we're not talking about is actually getting misconceptions out to the public and try and get that straightened out, because such as, uh, building, uh, for that, I'm guilty of it. Uh, I didn't realize, I mean, the building permit to bring a building in, so, you know, that's something that we need to talk about, try to get that out. Another misconception, I think that, uh, or I think it's a misconception, I've always been told that if you're building a new build, or a fence, or a wood, that you need a building permit for, right? That if you use any part of the existing structure, that you don't need a building permit for.
Like you're adding on to it?
Yeah, that you're adding on to it, not, that's, seriously, that's what I've always been told. Not the case?
I mean, a remodel, you would, but an add-on?
Add-on, you would. It changes the footprint of the structure?
So maybe those are some things. Anything that would change the footprint of the structure that's permanent?
So like I've got a little shed out there, which is, because I'm saying, again, I've got a little shed out there that I'm gonna eventually take down, but like I said, I was gonna put it back up. But I was always told that if you leave a post from the old structure, I'm serious, it's a lot of what I've been told. If you, and I've never heard that before, if you leave a post or whatever from the old existing structure...
Seriously.
That you're gonna, but you've never heard that, seriously, yeah?
Well, there, there are all of these ideas and communications that...
I mean, that's, and so then, there again, that's one of the misconceptions, myths that's out there. Linda's heard it, I've heard it, I've heard it for years, that that's...
I always encourage people that if they're gonna do anything, that they call, whatever county office, they need to...
That's what we need to get through, is if you're doing something like this, that we need to have them call you and talk to your office to check on this, because, like I said, I, I would have never figured a billion years, I would need a building permit to bring that building. 10 by 12, or whatever it is, would have never figured that in my head. So, that's, that's some of the misconceptions and misinformation that's out there, that we need to convey to the general public. And we're not out after you, we're just trying to, well, maybe be after me, I don't know. We're just trying to get it straightened out.
We're just trying to be consistent.
Yes.
We just want to be consistent with every aspect of the permitting process and what's getting picked up and what's...
Yep. And just like you, you said, Sue Levene?
Yes.
Sue Levene, you know, when she said, we had the building moved in, and she didn't know that we needed a, she needed a building permit for, so... There again, that's just a misconception that's out there that we just need to get straightened out.
Yeah.
And inform the general public, and inform me, and we'll all be, yeah, all happy with that, right?
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, we'll do that, do that all again, go on down there, cool. All right, thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
All right, anything else that's pressing? I can't think of anything, Limmel. Christie? Well, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
We'll probably move to second to adjourn this meeting, then a further discussion. Hearing none? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried.